Hey, you know, it's customary that I will take a moment of silence. We got the earthquake, we got wars, we got floods, we got murders, we got chaos. Anything good news happening right now? If you got someone who probably caught it, trying to all this mess out, man cannot do it. Let's just take a moment of silence for this country, call them new trial. I would thank you. But gracious Father, we come in the presence of thank you. Thanking you for everything you have done for us. Realize without you, we couldn't have accomplished anything. But this call, we just want to say thank you. I thank you for your son Ethan, we don't understand him personally. Father, I pray for the year, each year here, individually and in Vegas as well. Blessing with the need of the audience, Father. Everyone in our audience, I pray for them also. You make your own body, Father, and look at how much. I pray for this country, this state, this parent. I pray for our communities, Father. I pray for the less fortunate. And Father, we walk on the new schoolyard, bless you, bless our school system, bless our youth, Father. And look at how much. I pray for the less fortunate. I pray for the sick as well. And Father, I pray for constant news to understand it, Father. And look at how much. And please I want to call for the best of this town, the best of our building. And Father, if everything is ever done here, it'd be mine. Can help all the prayed in God, and you look at how much.
Praise the heavens. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter. Mr. Heavie, please call the room.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Present.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin.
Here.
President Louis Kent.
President Rebel Corr. If both of you approve of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Move by Mr. McCray, second by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Old business, adopted minutes from July twenty first, twenty twenty five, read the meeting.
I've watched them.
Everybody read them?
I've read through them, I'll make that motion.
Move by Mr. Mills.
Second.
Second by Coach Cheatham. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Under new business, discussing local housing, the Georgia housing voucher, Reverend George Turner. State your name, please.
Reverend George Turner, from the Kentucky county council. Uh, therefore, Mr. Chairman and members of board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as members of the, uh, House of Representatives of the program. Uh, there are certain requirements to meet with the main requirement is that the police jury has to pass a resolution authorizing that you want to address that concern with community. Uh, I do have a company that I share with, Ms. Harris here, and I should be sharing a budget. But, um, the federal agency, uh, they are not sure if they're going to change the name of the program, uh, but they still have to provide the services. You know, different administrations, uh, do that all the time, you know, they're, they're changing. They, they say they'll cut the program out, but they don't cut the program out, they change the name. They're cutting back the budget and stuff. But they still have to provide the services. But in order for a municipality to engage in those type of activities, you have to go according to what the state authorize you to do. And the state does authorize you to have a resolution saying that you would address the, uh, those needs of the parish. For affordable housing.
And we're the jury, we still look, look for affordable housing. Even where things are right now. Will, will she be on the, on the H U D, the Department of HUD? Or it's going to move them on the HUD?
Well, see, uh, I don't think it, it can, it can move from under HUD. Because see, HUD, uh, main purpose of existence is addressing all of the housing needs, uh, you know, abroad.
Right.
So, you know, now what they could do is they could, uh, pass that responsibility on to the state. And state could administer, but the state can only administer that program up under the federal regulations.
With all the cuts through the federal program, I just wanted to cut it off, so. What you had?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
But still, it's, it's, it's an advantage for the parish to go ahead and follow the rules of the state in terms of what you should do. So once everything is cleared, you're already, uh, uh, ahead of the process, then it doesn't cost you anything.
And we can't supersede the state anyway. So what's the pleasure of the jury? Pass the resolution. Go ahead and be in compliance with the state.
I'm sure they will.
So I'll just read this revised statute.
Please do.
Um, it said, "Resolution of, of governing body. In order for a municipality or parish to establish a local housing authority, which may conduct business and exercise its powers, the governing body or such municipality or parish desiring, desiring to establish such authority shall adopt a resolution declaring in substance that there is a need for local housing authority in said municipality or parish because there exists a shortage of decent, safe, and sanitary housing in the municipality or parish, or that such housing is not affordable to all residents thereof, regardless to income. No further action or finding shall be necessary. Upon this adoption of the resolution, the local housing authority shall be established and have perpetual existence unless dissolved in accordance with law."
Let us know what's the pleasure of the jury.
So when we, when we did a resolution.
Go ahead.
When we did a resolution in, in support of this, is that something totally different? Didn't we adopt a resolution being in, you know, supporting the, the housing, um, authority? I can't remember the exact words of it. It seemed like we passed a resolution not too long ago. I just don't want.
Couple of months.
Yeah, a couple of months ago. I don't know if it meant the same thing.
Different thing, we're supporting the veterans then before the housing. They have the veterans out.
Yeah.
That's the resolution we passed a couple of months ago.
Would it cover that?
Yes, it's a different.
Your resolution addressed at one particular program.
Right.
But the resolution there is speaking about, has actually given you the authority to address all of the concerns that deal with housing.
So motions have taken, no more questions?
Did you say that, that you were, that the government, the federal government is talking about changing the program, getting rid? What were, what were you saying about?
What I said earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, what I said earlier.
Yeah.
There were some questions that the federal administration was considering changing the name of the program. But it's not in court at this point.
Any more questions?
Can I say something? Okay, so I believe this is a good start. It, it does talk, still talk about the lo, a local housing authority. To have a local housing authority, um, not particularly a voucher or anything else. So if the resolution needs to be passed, this would not be a resolution. I think Mister, if Mister, um, Sequilla
How to do.
may need to look at this and see about a resolution. Maybe look into it a little more and see if you establish the law, local housing authority, then how would you have to run it? Who would be responsible?
Okay. That was the question this afternoon, tonight. We're passing on some legal files, and you let it go from there.
Well, that's, that's a good start.
Okay.
We all just want to prove to, uh, to local legal team that, uh.
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, at the last meeting, there was another item that I brought up, I don't know if you all remember. I asked if you can put it on the agenda, if the cane to housing. So if it's okay, I just want to talk a little bit more about it.
It's not on the agenda right now. I put it on the next agenda, okay? I'm sorry for that.
Excuse me. One of the things we got to clear up, you know, establishing a house authority, you know, it comes with costs. Some, you know, you have to have a staff, you have to have a building, you have expenses. And so before we go any further, we got to get that figured out.
Not all the details about it all, but that's a question that Mr. Porter.
Which is true, uh, but like you say, let's go one, one option at a time, necessarily, uh, with the lawyer first.
Yes.
Right.
And we can hear from there.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, Reverend Turner. Next on the agenda, discuss library mileage renewed, Trevor Collins, Albert Richard. State your name, please.
Trevor Collins, Oklahoma Regional Library. We'd just like to request with your approval, uh, that we could do the, um, the call, uh, to the election at one September fifteenth and actually have the election for our millage on, uh, the fourth, I'm sorry, uh, April fourth, twenty six. So our, our millage expires in twenty seven. Uh, and we, we've been in discussion with, um, the bond attorney, uh, Bullet P. G. L., that's usually does our millage. And we, we'd like to do it at this date because if the, if the millage doesn't pass for whatever reason, it allows us to go back to the dollars and funding. Looking at the, the call estimates from the Secretary of State, the April date would be much more affordable for us. Uh, so the, the, the May date, the other date we were considering was May, and that estimate was around forty thousand because it would just be, uh, it's usually up. Right, if you didn't want to do that. So, uh, right. So the April eighteenth is just about three thousand four hundred, which is much more affordable. Well, that's according to their estimate. Uh, the millage itself, it's, it's the same mill, it's just continuation.
It's a renewed, it's not a new tax.
Sort of, yes. It's, it's, it's a, um, it's a continuation. It's a, but we would like to rededicate the millage. And the reason for that is we'd like to rededicate it to include the work capital, uh, work in there because if we ever did receive the footing, we'd like to be able to consider maybe opening a small location of slaughter or something like that. Uh, right now, we don't have the work capital, uh, in the millage, and, and this will allow us to do that at our own place.
To be with you, always put our elections on the ballot early in case it fails, you can obviously bring it back up. That's a, that's a good practice.
So this, uh, uh, this isn't an, an action item that you're, at, at right now. It's just, I just wanted to let you know about it, and, and if you have any questions, they're always available as well as right now. And, um, and then I'll plan to request again, uh, September, uh, fifteen, I recall the election.
But I want you to stipulate to the public, it's a renewed, not a new tax now.
That's correct. It's the same. It's the same. We would never ask for anything more. Uh, we're, we're happy and to do, as much because we can't, what we have, we would never want to place an, an additional burden on taxpayers.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, discuss take action on the purchase of twenty twenty three Brown Inter Van Voyage, Patricia LaTrayle and Cindy McManus, Council on Aging. State your name, please.
My name is Cindy McManus. I am the Director of East Plushana Public Transit and also the Director of the East Plushana Council on Aging. But tonight I want to talk to you about public transit. The East Plushana Public Transit is purchasing a two thousand twenty three Voyager minivan for nine thousand one hundred and eight dollars. We are purchasing the van with Kapasue Parish Public Transit through the Kapasue Parish Police Jury under a Federal Transportation Administration grant. This van came up for sale after an FTA audit, FTA audit that, uh, uh, East Plushana Transit had last month. The Department of Transportation suggested that we should purchase another van to replace a van in our fleet that was past its required limit for years and mileage. FTA would rather us replace a van than spend money on repairs. We currently have three buses in the fleet that will be removed. Bus purchases are normally included in the annual FTA contract grant that is submitted every year to the police jury. But the van came up for sale in July, and we were given an option to purchase it under an FTA grant at a great price. So the vehicle will be used for, um, East Plushana Public Transit to transport general public passengers. And we are also working on our annual FTA contract for the twenty, two thousand twenty six, twenty seven contract due in October, which will also have a bus purchase included on that contract. So because the East Plushana Public Transit is a parish agency, we don't have authority to directly execute transactions and contracts with the Department of Transportation. Since the police jury is the parish's governing authority, East Plushana Public Transit must go through the police jury for all contracts. So the reason I'm here is because the Department of Transportation is requesting that parish police jury send in writing on their letterhead an agreement to purchase the vehicle. The D O, the, the DOT will then write up the contract, and once it's executed, East Plushana Public Transit will write a check from our account to the Kapasue Parish Police Jury to purchase the van.
That's all we need.
Mm-hmm.
And we give, with Council on Aging, Anthony Hill, can we?
I'll make the motion if we go ahead and provide with.
Okay. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Thank you, Mr. McManus. Next on the agenda, request twenty twenty five liquor license for Sylvester Investments, DBA Sylvester Outdoor Supplies. Gary Sylvester, is he here? Have you applied to the state for a liquor license?
So we have some documents in the binder that I received from this jury who does our liquor license. They tell me that everything was, um, completed by Miss Gary Sylvester. I'm sure he gives you all the questions, but.
No questions. Everything is in order.
What kind of place, what kind of place of business is this?
Yeah, because he's saying I.
Store or what? Outdoor supply.
Outdoor supply.
So what does he need a liquor license for? It's like a florist, a florist asking for a liquor license to sell flowers.
She didn't answer the question, but once the state approves it, we have no right to deny the license.
Yep. Yeah, because I've been to Bash Pro, I ain't never seen nothing like a beer can in there, or a Cabela's. Or the Co-op, for that matter, right here in town. So how do we?
So the state has gave an approval?
Well, he's, he's met, he's met, he's met everything legally.
Why should we deny? We give, we give one day liquor license to have, to have fundraisers for people. It's something we do all the time. This is commercial business, yeah. It's commercial.
Yeah.
Y'all have said, what's, what's, what's the pleasure of the jury?
Oh, we got a motion.
I'll make the motion, we accept. I accept.
The quick morning. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
What is, what is? Okay, let's move on. Discuss take action on the member request for the gap contract twenty two twenty two. Mr. Anthony Rushton, state your name, please.
Yes, uh, Anthony Rushton, foreword seven, uh, and also Mr. Sam Brown, I'm president. Uh, this request is to change two of the LGAP grants we have, we'll take person. Uh, the twenty two, twenty three LGAP grant from purchasing equipment at risk road. We're doing this through our much larger, we're using these grants to, uh, augment our USDA grant. But what's happening is you can only have two LGAP grants open at a time. And there's a third LGAP grant with police jury.
Right.
And we're trying to extend one of these LGAP grants, or both of them actually, to go ahead and get out of the way of the police jury. But those grants were originally designated to buy a generator at risk road. And we can, we're still doing that, but the generator lead time is six months. And you have to have the generator sitting there, even if it's not hooked up, to take a picture of it, send it to the state so we can extend the money. But, so we'd like to change this from generator to water, stuff, piping and all the other work we're doing, which is, we're ordering that now, so we can extend that money now. So you can guys get your LGAP money now.
You have to take the, close out one of the grants, you'll be receiving a power money.
Get out of your way, get our money spent, so, uh, that's what we're here requesting, is to change it from equipment, uh, generator, risk, risk road, which we're still going to do. It's all money, all goes into the same pot.
That's what I was about to ask you, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to ask.
The waterworks, the pipeline we're putting in, the new water lines, the risk road work, all that's in the same deep ground. So we're just moving the, we're getting paperwork straight with the state so we can go ahead and get these LGAP.
The minimum of grants.
Move to accept.
Move by Mr. Cheatham, second by Dr. Quinn. Any more discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Don't leave yet, you have one more turn. Discuss take action on the member request for the gap contract twenty three, twenty four.
That's correct. And it's the same, same thing. One of them, we have thirty seven thousand left and change, uh, spend on first LGAP, and this one's a forty thousand dollar grant. Uh, so we're just trying to move both of them. I know it's not going to take more than six months to get the generator, but there's no sense in leaving the other one out there. We can go ahead and put it in there because the also USDA wants to spend all the local funds before they start putting in federal funds. So once again, we need to get this out of our way. So if we could, go ahead and move that.
And again, that's all falling in the same umbrella.
Same work.
Move to accept.
Move by Mr. Armstrong.
I see.
Second by Mr. McCray. Any more discussion?
I want to say something.
Please do.
Um, and I just want to thank you because me, Mr. Um, President Ken and myself did come to and leave not long ago and just explained to you all what's going on with the LGAP grant. It's been a while since the police jury has actually used the LGAP grant themselves. And you all did say that you would work hard to close this out in six months. So thank you for keeping us updated on what's going on so we can go ahead and change whatever kind of jury.
Go ahead, thank you all, also.
Do they have to have both of their grants closed?
The one.
Well, we, we need one.
One.
But the second one, because the USDA would like us to use all of them. They're requiring us to use all the local funds first, both LGAP and C WIB, the C WIB grants that we're applying to. Well, the C WIB grants already say water work, they, they don't say generator. So we're trying to get both of them moved because we don't want to wait six months to start the water work project. If we don't get both of them moved, then we can't extend the grants, and we won't be able to start the water work. So it's kind of, they're kind of tied at the ankles right there. So we need to really get both of them.
They can close out one, we can get out one money. This great kill, two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got a motion, is there any more discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion care. Thank you, all.
Thank you.
And I, I, I came to the Louisiana Rural Water Association, and they had an LGAP and C WIB grant, uh, workshop in that. And I'll just let you know, the governor and the legislature, maybe it's just a legislature coincidence with, uh, Governor Landry, he's putting more money. Like this year, you guys got a hundred thousand dollars, which was more than we've ever gotten. And next year, they said it's going to be the same or more, so. And C WIB is also going up also, so it stands again for both the water district and the parish.
Thank you, that's a good job, thank you, okay? Mr. Rushton, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna come back to you on, on the next one. I'm gonna take Ms. Garrett next, okay? State your name, please.
Felicia Garrett. We get discussing conditions of the Long Range Road and the neglect that we've been suffering through for about six years out there. Raider will come out, grade the road, but all they do is push the large limbs into the ditch that doesn't exist anymore either. But if somebody come out there and clean those ditches, pick the sticks up, hand-to-hand combat, it's going to be footwork and all work. But there's no other way to get them out of there. Many of them are grown up in weeds, about eleven feet high. You don't even know what's under there, so you can't move over and assist you. Maybe ride on it because you can't meet any traffic, you gotta pick a spot or back up. Let me let them go there. About quarter mile rubber on my end, about a mile and a half maybe on the other end. But both of them are terrible.
We had talked about it. Yes, my dear.
I think this young lady said she might ride out there and see it when I talk to you, never, never get you.
Yeah.
It's awful.
We had.
And I have pictures of the roads all the way around us. Every road got done, but ours, in more than one occasion, I've watched them do it several years. Ours done get touched. They're sitting greater down there, takes about seven hours to grade it because you can't go anywhere, you can't do anything. He finally gets the limbs pushed into the ditch, we, everybody go, we start over. But Kyle knows, I dialed him six o'clock in the morning because I could go get him a doctor. I couldn't get out, I was first sworn out, road was washed out. The culvert that they did put in is, I laugh when I call it a culvert, it's kind of a mince off. And they put it in the wrong spot. So if you're not going to put it in the wrong spot, right, so I'm taking all the way out and somebody just keep it graded. Because Bo's been grading it for about three or four years, Mac Arthur's been grading it, James Jenkins grades the other end, Jason's grading this end, and my other new neighbor's grading. So everybody's working on it, but Bo's sure. So I might get done, I might get done soon. And I don't even, I don't have to use a bridge right now, but I do have to use a road every day. Mail lady, it's atrocious. FedEx, I mean, everybody's fussing. Gas man, the delivery man, UPS, anybody that's got to use it is frustrating.
I've been getting a gun for playing.
And, uh, yeah, so.
I know.
Niggas, don't need an engineer to do it. Don't send an engineer out there for ninety five thousand dollars, shoot grade it on the road. Nine-year-old grass up in Texas. Mama, dig the ditches out and put all that gravel back up on the road. I said, exactly. You may grow up to be an engineer, son, but we need the road graded. The ditch has got to be deepened at least this deep.
And the grain.
It is. And the road has got to be brought up above sea level. Maintenance have to be done, that's why they call it maintenance. And I got, I don't know how many men over here on maintenance, but I see them all the time holding up the shovel. We got signs that were knocked down on the grader, knocked them down, Robin's Road. When they came and cut it, of course, cut the sign down. It's been down for months. I mean, somebody all have to ride around and make little notes of where it's bad in your area. And when they said they were going to hire an engineer for ninety five thousand dollars, I said, I'll do it for half. I'm riding around making notes on it anyway for free because I'm a cactus bear and I got to ride down that road. And nothing's changed, didn't happen yet, so. So change will be expected if we have to take further actions.
It will be, it changes, man. I talked to the director, he can wait just a second. Ms. Harris talked with him also. And me, you have talked also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many, many, many years.
Yeah.
I said, say, we working on it, we getting to you. I don't want to hear I'm working on it, I'm getting to you, I want to hear it's done. The only words I want to hear is it's done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I do have.
I have a search problem.
So I do.
What do you have, all?
I do have something. So this was my first time speaking with Mrs. Felicia last, um, week. And as soon as I spoke with her, I did reach out. Mr. Frosty has been out sick, but the deputy director, Mr. KJ, I did speak with him through texting and, and Mr. Keith. Um, and he did tell me some information about the bridge that, and I did explain to him.
Yeah.
You care less about the bridge right now.
It's okay.
And he told me.
You got to fix your river to get to the bridge.
He did tell me that L, um, L Williams is on the list to be graded. And I told him that we would this week reach out, we would go out and see what we can get done from the other things besides the bridge. But the bridge was also just for information purposes. Um, he told me the information he had was they were supposed to start on the bridge. There's been a couple other small things to pop up, but the plan was to start the bridge this week, that was last week. The weather caught them again, it's either been the weather or equipment. Um, L Williams was supposed to start immediately after the last bridge was completed. So I know you spoke with Mr. Lewis and you spoke with whoever, but we, I spoke with Mr. Lewis as well.
Yes.
We are working on getting some things done. Just so you know, we did, we are addressing.
Well, we want to get you to say.
But wasn't there any reason why they didn't do it when they were out there doing the other thirteen roads? Like I said, you could drive a double-wide trailer, two-story house down, you won't touch either side. They were graded down to the dirt. The ditches are plain, not a limb fell except the ones that the father said y'all did. And it didn't come, I mean, like, right there. You can come in the by road, look down Peterson, a quarter mile, and see it wide and beautiful. That's when I really got the ratings.
Just understand, thank you, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir, state your name, please.
My name is William Rowland. I'm fifty-four, and I've lived fifty-three of those years on L Williams Road. I'd like to second everything Ms. Garrett said, I wholeheartedly, uh, second everything she said, I, everything. I mainly got two things I want to talk about. Right there on the end of nine sixty-one at the bottom of the hill where the Williams or the, uh, holidays, Right there on the end of nine sixty one at the bottom of the hill where the Williams or the holidays, no dad system comes out for years. We've had this ditch after it rains, this bad ditch that comes along. And we've never been getting it fixed until a couple of years ago, y'all put a, y'all put a culvert in. We put it in the wrong place because every time it rains now, it still washes out. I was out of town, I worked out of town, I wasn't gone for about three months. I came home one before last, I could barely get my car past. After going off in the ditch, like she said, up against all the riders in there. Don't know what's that, I'm asking the ditch, don't know what I'm driving in. But it's still wore out, I had to get, do that just to get down the road. And so then, I can't only go out, I have a, a Z seventy one truck, well, I can get in and out on that. But why does this keep happening? Well, I was the culvert put into the wrong spot, it keeps. We have to, we're paying taxes, yet we're the ones out there having to fix our own roads. I keep two shovels in the bed of my truck because after every rain, I know I may have to go down there or one other spot to fix the washouts. And they keep happening in the same place again and again. Second thing, what this lady here said about the bridge. On July ninth, my neighbor, Mr. Todd, sent me some pictures, he heard some stuff going on down there at the bridge. He sent us some pictures. And it looks like they went a little bit past the right of way. They cleared out all my, all my, my property actually extends on both sides of the bridge. Um, y'all cleared out a whole big section, way, way past the right of way, which I'm not really gonna complain about, but it would've been nice to know that it was happening. So the following day, uh, the tenth, I called and talked with the public, the public works and said, so what are y'all doing? Why did y'all do that? Oh, we're getting ready to fix the bridge. Well, okay, well, when are y'all gonna start? I can't tell you now. Call me next weekend, I'll be able to tell you. That was three weeks ago. I called last week, talked to the lady, I'm not sure her name, she's, guess she's the secretary there that runs the office. Hey, can you tell me when y'all gonna start working on this bridge? She goes, let me go ask somebody. She goes away, she comes back, no, I still can't tell you. Well then, why did you clear the property out? You know, y'all did this, but yet you don't know when you're gonna start working on the bridge? And y'all went way past the right of way on my property to clear it out. So what, what are we paying taxes for if we're having to fix the roads ourselves? And then you start work and you can't tell me when? You know, you should start work to say, oh, preliminary work to fix the bridge, but yet you can't tell me when you're gonna start fixing the bridge? Which I don't care if the bridge gets fixed or not, but hey, at least if you're gonna, if you're doing something, you should at least know. Be able to tell me, okay, it's gonna start here, but nobody can tell me anything. And then, I listened to this lady here, she says like somebody's telling her, they know. They, they got delayed for weather, they got delayed for their sedat. Nobody can tell me that. You know? It's frustrating.
I would.
This, this problem, this, especially like the problem, the culvert, that's been going on over two, two years. Put a, put, put a culvert in, in the right spot so it could wash them out. So we have to, so we don't have to fix our own roads when we're paying taxes to the parish jury to keep these roads on there. That's everything I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Kenneth Calvert. I live in ninety three and then four, L Williams Road. That's on the north side of the bridge. I took this picture today. You wanna see that?
Please do.
Just to give you an idea of what the situation is, that's the bridge down there, that furry green spot.
Yeah. I've been there, you're right.
Apologize, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, not only did I speak for myself, I speak for my brother who did say a little bit. I had to call, excuse me, he had to call nine one one and get EMS out of our house one time. If our road was really bad where EMS can't get in and out, we're gonna have a problem. Uh, the north end. Mr. Kennedy, I believe you spoke to a couple of people that are on the north end, they're not here this season, but you know what they have, so. Uh, down the end of the road, that four thirty two, there's a bridge outside, there's actually two. Nobody bothered to remove the one that split in two. Been damaged so many times, they pulled another one up and put it in front. A lot of times, the weeds are so high there that you can't see the signs at all. We have to go down and clean it out every once in a while. Uh, the overgrowth. You can see the overgrowth. It's all up in there. There's lots of times where you go out there on a, excuse me, our own bush wall and clear the air. Just so we don't have animals running out in front of us and so we can see cars that are coming from the other end of the road. There's debris on the road at ninety seven forty four, large Williams. It's in there since Hurricane Ida. I understand pulling the gravel up out of the ditches and making ditches on the road. Down the north end, you got a cradle on that road that is a four percent if you get to one side or the other. To give you an idea of what the four percent is. Any one of these hills around town, if you're going north sixty seven and you go past the dentist office there, that's one percent. If you get over the side of the road, we got a four percent angle, you're not falling out past yourself. Washout on the hill, you know about. It's not any better. There's times that we've had ruts going across the road that's close to two foot deep. I've had to have my girlfriend stop her car elsewhere and go pick her up. She can't get in and out. I've already mentioned EMS. There's a washout near my driveway. Every time there is a big rain, there's a washout there. Sometimes it's a foot deep. Every time I have mentioned this since nineteen ninety five, that's when I moved there. I've been told that, oh, the culvert needs to be cleaned out. There's no culvert, never has been a culvert there. There's a tree stump sticking out into the road that has been there since high up. Nobody's bothered to push it back out of the way, cut it off, or anything to sound effective. Uh, and you can see in the picture, there's no maintenance on the road to the bridge past my driveway, which leads me to the next thing. Everybody uses my property, my driveway to turn around. That includes eighteen wheelers that have pulled in on my property to turn around. I don't get any assistance on my driveway, I take care of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We go ahead, just to concern, we eat one more time.
Can I say one more thing if you don't mind? Um, why is there a handwritten bridge outside on the nine sixty one end? Y'all don't have a regular old bridge outside. Somebody had to come out and put a blank white sign and write "Bridge Out" on it, Sharpie?
No, I, I, I don't.
It's right, it's right there right now. That's how it was when I come back home, I'm like, what? You don't have a gr- a regular bridge outside?
I'm giving the director, that shouldn't happen, we have.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I had to go request that because the bridge, the raider had knocked the sign down. Two, three weeks went by, they didn't come put it back up. People were coming down it to see if the bridge isn't out. They're backing all the way up that hill past his house with the ditch about four foot deep of trees.
We go ahead, just y'all concern.
Eleven feet high. You can't see anything, they're backing back up. So I came and asked Rachel at the works office and said, please get some kind of bridge outside. It is dangerous for y'all to not have one.
Make, make me a little more sense, please.
It's a handwritten mark on outside, bring it out.
No, no, thank you.
I mean, what's that? I mean, it's, 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 I left, the, 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 the bridge outside that was there had been knocked down for months and nobody had, I, we, we had gone and stood it back up. When I come back home, I stopped and I looked and I read, you could barely read it, somebody wrote "Bridge Out" on the back of some other sign. So, and if you don't mind my asking, ma'am, you would have said something, you'd have some information about when they are supposed to start working on that bridge?
I have the information on when they were to start and that's after they finished, that would've just been a couple of weeks ago, but he said because of the weather. I, um, don't want to give you a date. Because I don't want to say tomorrow and then we don't start tomorrow because of some other reason. But, um, if you would give me a chance to, to work on this, then.
No, but it is, it is in.
It is.
And you said when the next bridge is finished, which bridge is that?
It's done.
It's done.
Oh, it's done.
It's done.
Y'all are, y'all are next on the next.
Y'all in there.
Which one was it? This next, this other one?
Perkins was it on?
Perkins.
The one that's in it?
Which one?
Adam Perkins, Beaver, Beaver Creek Bridge?
But that one wasn't fixed, it was bought out by Jeffrey DeVall.
No, no. You saw Perkins Road, where the creek cross was washing out so bad, it was the most you got to repair it.
Oh, not Beaver Creek Road?
No, 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 no.
It just sold it.
Yeah, it's on Perkins.
Oh, where that road got sold?
It's on Perkins, it's on Perkins.
That makes one on highway, it's pretty, isn't it?
No.
Okay.
No, Perkins. But, uh, we go ahead, just y'all concern, immediately, okay? Okay.
And just, if, you know, give, give the landowners some notice when y'all go to clear out the property, though, the area around the bridges. I know you need the marriage for staging room and for staging material, and yet went a bit over the right of way. I don't complain about that. But just let the property owners around there know, hey, we're working around here. So, you know, my neighbor doesn't have to tell me, you know, say, put, you know, send us a letter, send us a note, something. Hey, we're gonna be working down there, you know, we're gonna be clearing out the area, the property. So you just, we know what's going on.
Well, I'll work on maybe putting out some signs that say road work. But I, I won't promise you that you'll receive a call that's gonna say that the work is about to be done or a letter. Because we won't be able to do that for every, yeah.
And to avoid persons using it for the last four or five years, they came out there and they took off eleven boards on this south end. That's way more dangerous than not doing anything, I mean, really. But not on the other end, just don't worry. The other end's fine. They come and go all the way up to the bridge and what, what was the point of that? It was like Thanksgiving weekend, we walked down there with the kids and eleven boards just gone. And when I called and asked about it, they said it wasn't them, that was the state. I said, why was the state being coming out doing any of that? It's been out forever, why would they all of a sudden get interested? They saw somebody had been using the bridge, riding across it, cutting a tree off the firewood, which was safer. It was his property, his side, he can't find, he can't clean it up, so he couldn't. It, that's accurate. So they just came and ripped the boards out, all eleven on this side. I went, well, how about the safe is that?
It must've been used.
It's still like that, I mean, you know, he, take all of them if you're gonna do it, or don't take any of it, that was ridiculous.
Okay, we thank y'all.
And I didn't understand the point.
We thank y'all for coming, go ahead, address our concerns starting tomorrow, okay? I give it out direct, okay?
With the grader, you say?
I'm gonna talk with the director, he's out sick, but he should be back.
The grader's not gonna do us any good.
The guy tells that brush back in.
We go, we're gonna take, we're gonna address the concern.
All he can do is push the sticks into the ditch a little further. And the ditches are about eleven foot wide now and, uh, yay deep and junk. So there's no ditch.
We give it frost in the morning.
And we'll begin addressing it. So that doesn't mean that you'll see work tomorrow.
But we go ahead.
Yeah, and you have my number, I have your number.
Any improvement on the road will be a great improvement, not that great, like I said, I watched them do that, so. It, that's just, that, that's a waste of our parish money. We're gonna talk about waste and fraud, we'll start that.
Okay, we thank y'all for coming.
With that much equipment to come for that long a time to do a quarter mile road in that condition is futile.
We thank you for concern, thank y'all for coming, go, thank, thank you. We're gonna move on. But thank y'all again, okay?
Thank you.
Discuss the pair on part home page, you're Richard Oliver.
Okay, my name got put on that.
That's your baby.
Yes, I will, I'll make the comment that, uh, I mentioned that you'd like to see that and it got addressed to you, but, uh, I will follow on that sword for you, Mr. Richard, that I got you in the situation it's in.
Well, I mean, I, I'll just, we, we're looking at the bill for the father's back, seventy one hundred dollars. You know, my question is, how long have we had it? How long have we been in the shop? And, uh, so. Parts, we can't do nothing about parts, it's twenty seven hundred dollars worth of labor. These papers, so was that, and so was several other things. And, uh, we have, we, we've, uh, got to figure out either how to use this equipment, get rid of it, or something, because, uh.
You've been a problem since we had.
Well, the, the, the truck is back in operation, is out working today, so.
It's not?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, oh.
And, and did they receive some training on how to clean it and make sure it can do?
I don't know about that, Ms. Oliver, that, all that was done when they bought the machine. Now, what extent it went to, I can't say. I wasn't there in person. But they did go through training when they got the machine. I mean, idiot ought to know how to clean something.
Well, if I can.
You don't have to get trained in it.
One at a time, okay.
If I could get them, a man has been running the same truck for two years, that's figured out all the problems, to show them, would they, would be willing to accept that?
Would who be willing?
Have no choice.
Would who be willing?
The, the, whoever's on the truck or the chain of command down to, to do that.
Give Mr. Harris, he got the rise in it, and she's an acting parish manager, and she got the rise to train. She went did operations, it would've soon been a problem.
Well, I'm just, I, I can make that happen.
Okay, talk to, talk to parish manager. I heard the truck had broke down the next day, they sent a repair, or they fixed it the same day.
Well, it is out working today, I saw it working, so. It's, it's, it's up and running. Keep your fingers crossed and keep on running. That's all it could do.
Anything else, Ms. Oliver?
No, um, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I mean, it, it stayed on vacation holiday for how long?
It stayed sick a long time.
You know? That's it, no simply.
Well, you gotta be careful with your ax, bro. You wanted it, we got it.
Hey, I wanted it, and, but I'm mad at you saying.
Yeah, it's just like that zipper, we got it, you wanted it, we got it. The way it is, it's, it's sealed up there, it be sold to you.
So move on.
And by the way, now that we on there and we talking about that, we gonna have a public work meeting. And some of these equipment, we gonna get ready to sell and look at purchasing some other things. And I'll talk about that when it.
Coming you, yes, sir, okay, thank you, Ms. McCrea. I'm at table number nine to enter the meeting, okay? We're gonna adjourn the session to discuss harmony, okay?
Can I go back to number seven?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
Um, the one thing that I did notice and I brought it up at the meeting is we did have a quote that included what the cost was gonna be on the labor and everything else in there that was approved. I think it had a, uh, hurt disorder with it. So we need to pay those people, they told us what they were gonna charge us.
Well, I thought we had came to the agreement a couple of months ago, we were gonna stop that holding bills and holding people's payout. If a person has provided the services, they need to get their payout and get it out on time. We don't need that, uh, 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 I mean, negative, uh.
Publicity.
Publicity saying that we gonna, we gonna pay our bills.
No.
If we don't have anybody that wanna come up here and do work for us.
Well, listen, a couple of four over here, he handed to me, I said, this is kinda excessive. Truck's been gone a long time. I said, everybody needs to hear it, so.
That's true.
You gotta be taking over.
Yes, and, and, uh, we're not holding anything, we're just bringing to your attention. I felt like, Mr. Richard, he had a valid point, it's been months in the shop, and so everybody else here at the table needed to know. So we're not holding their money, we're not disputing that we owe it. We just want you to understand significant amount of money that we've spent to purchase it, very little use, and significant amount of money to repair it, to get it back operational. So that was the point of bringing it before the full jury.
Mr. McCrea, I see your concern, anything that, that the parish owe, we're gonna pay you. If they provide a service, we should pay out, we're gonna pay out our bills, okay?
I mean, 'cause everything had been done on with this. You got a PO, all that, invoice, everything done. So after that's done, the next step is pay your bill. You don't hold people's money because of your personal feelings or way you feel. You gotta, you gotta pay your bills, that, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We go table number nine to enter the meeting, okay? Committee and staff report, the executive committee. I pound on this every meeting. We got the rededication coming up. We need to pound on getting that ordinance passed, okay? Each jury do their job. I want the public to understand, it's not a new tax, it's rededicating our fund to show up our general fund. And it's something we need to get done. To put the jury on good funding. It never costs the parish out one penny, we rededicate some hell unit money to divide between rolling bridge and the general fund.
And Mr. President, I have a question about that also.
Please do.
Has the wording been straightened up? We had talked about straightening up some of the verbiage in it. Has that been done? Because I, I heard otherwise and I wasn't sure about that.
I don't think it has been. I don't think it had been.
Cause there was some things that we needed to kinda clean up in it, cause people had the wrong perception of what it was saying. We need to make sure we take care of that before you put it out.
Cause it does make it look like, like new tasks.
Yeah, always do.
And it's not.
I just wanted to bring it to the attention of all the jurors.
Is that something that council could look over and see what we can do to, uh, rephrase the wording in that?
What did they do? They put it on the bill. That's the way they put it on the bill, right?
You sent that in, the Secretary of State, and they said, that's the way it's got to be.
Yes, and it, it would, yeah, it would be too late to change anything.
Change the verbiage.
Maybe we can have a write-up in the paper about it.
If we need, each juror in the bridge, go to constituents and explain that it's something that need to be done for the parish. If not, we're gonna make severe cuts in this law. And I don't want to see none be cut. And we ask our constituents, please support this proposition. Not gonna cost you one thing, just, just your vote. Thank you. Let's move on. Personnel committee, Dr. Chris O'Quinn.
I don't have anything.
Finance committee, Mr. Kyle Flynn.
I have two items. Uh, item A is a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Motion, sir.
Any discussion? Question from the audience, in the honor of favor? In a poll, motion care.
Second item is to award the bid for parish engineers.
As you know, pass that on to the finance committee and agree each forum individually. Mr. Flynn, go ahead.
Uh, yes. Uh, I don't have those tally numbers in front of me. However, uh, the recipient of the award is quality engineering.
Yeah, right. Quiet, can I?
And, and we have to vote on that.
Yeah, we have to approve it tonight.
So. Finance committee, a motion and a second one.
One, not a beat.
Well, I'd like to make the motion.
Well, Mr. Secretary.
Quality engineering.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion?
I do.
Okay, please do.
Okay, um, the numbers were really, really close together. And, um, I voted with the rest of the finance committee. But I think we need to consider as a jury that we had a company that worked for us. Cause we don't have to take the highest number, the lowest number, whatever. We get a little bit leeway on there. That we had a company that worked for us, that we were not paying their money, their bills, their invoices. They still came out and they did what we asked them to do. And I, I think that that's something that we need to consider when we look at, uh, awarding the contract. We didn't have issues with the board, no? We never had any trouble with them.
At Forte and Toblata.
Forte and Toblata. And I just think that, um, I don't know, I, I think we need to consider that they did those things for us. And they done good work.
And the jury don't have to take the recommendation coming from the finance committee.
What is the difference in the two?
One point, one point, very close.
I think the entire, I think the entire spread between everybody was about five, four to five points. So, it was very close.
It was close.
Why did we go through all of this? Why didn't we just, if the jury wanted to keep forward the block, we should have just said we just gonna go forward the block?
Well, maybe we should have. I didn't know that we could. I would have suggested that.
We had to, we had to.
You got, you had to do, you had to do.
So, we had to do it.
You had to do it. That's right. You had to do it.
But I think we should take into consideration.
So, what's the play that it do? We don't have to accept the recommendation.
I would have to accept it.
Substitute motion.
Substitute.
Substitute motion and judge people. I make a substitute motion to, uh, reward, award the contract to Forte and Toblata. Second.
Okay. We go vote on the substitute motion first. You made your first motion for quality, right?
Yes, because they were the highest ranking number. Yes, sir.
So, go vote on the second motion first. Roll call, go please.
So, the second motion is, um, to award the bid to Forte and Toblata.
Can I, can I ask one thing?
Forte and Toblata.
Yeah, please do.
I understand it's a full jury, uh, decision. But wouldn't the three of us, being that we were the ones doing the scoring in that group, shouldn't we abstain? I mean, doesn't that get into being a conflict of?
No, no.
No, you don't have to abstain.
Cause we rated them on a, a certain set of merits numerically and then.
Well, ultimately, the whole jury makes a decision.
But you're still representing people in your district.
Okay, I just want to be clear before we move forward, cause we scored one way and then we might be going another with choices, so.
So, the substitute motion is to award the contract to Forte and Toblata. Roll call, go.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flynnakin?
No.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
No.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn?
Yes.
Six. That's six in favor of award.
Before you count, Mr. Cheatham, uh, before that, did you second the motion not to?
Yeah, I did the first time. He seconded the motion to vote on, accepted the, the bid.
And he can still vote, sir.
He didn't vote, sir.
He still voted.
He didn't second the motion. He still gave the change of vote.
All right, okay.
That's six in favor of awarding the bid to Forte and Toblata.
Okay. Any more discussion? We gonna move on.
Yes, I'd like to say something to Representatives of Forte and Toblata for my vote. And I want to explain why I voted the way I did, so we're all very clear. It's not that I feel that you're greater or lesser. I just feel as though that based off our scoring packet, I could not in good faith vote in favor of you. So, I want that to be very clear upfront. Thank you.
While we make the comments, I, I see the lady from PEC's here.
Well, she's in support of us a lot.
I know, I already know that. Is she gonna be dedicated to us?
I don't know if we made that open to the decision, but I mean, just, just, yeah, just one of the consulting engineering firms you guys hired, so. You have, you have also probably twenty-five licensed engineers that can be bridges. We have some engineers that have to be bridges, so.
Well, let me, let me tell you more. We, I discussed this with you. We had a very important meeting that we got this ongoing process. When y'all, engineers should have been there, you sent a survey roadmap. So, I just hope that we get engineering services. That's, that's gonna be, it's gonna cause us confusion right here.
I, I will reach out to, um, Mr. Josh and Ms. Bianca on getting a meeting set up like you all usually do after the, the bidding or the, or the award to move forward with the contracts and everything.
I want the jury to perfectly understand, just because the committee make a recommendation, the jury don't have to adhere to their recommendations. We live in a, in a democracy. Majority rules, okay? Want you to know that.
And all.
Committee recommendation, uh, just to keep so much time from being involved in discussion, done a meeting. That's why we have committees, okay?
And also the number.
It's not binding. I want you to perfectly to understand that. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Lewis. Also, the number was a total, was, was totaled of all three. So, I wouldn't say one was in favor more of the other, cause I did total the, the numbers.
And I probably would have not made that motion, or they're a great big difference. But with everybody so clustered together, I think, you know, that justified me making a substitute motion.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Flynn?
No, sir. I believe that's it. Thank you.
Let's move on. Public working equipment, Mr. Jason McCray.
Okay, um, as I stated earlier, the Paddle Path is, is working again. We do have both trucks out. The other one is still out working also. And I want to let y'all, the ones that don't know it, uh, directing, Mr. Frost is out right now, sick, he's ill. He tried to come back to work today and he had to leave. He came down with COVID and it's getting him a rough time right now. But y'all kinda be patient with us with it. But, uh, KJ and Mr. Davis, uh, running everything right now. So, you call off and speak with Miss Rachel, and she'll get your message over to, to them. And, uh, we will be having a public work meeting here pretty soon. I'm gonna get with Ms. Harris, cause we said we'd have some info, information for y'all when the second week, uh, second meeting of August came. So, we'll be working on that soon. That's all I have, Mr. Flynn.
Building property, Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Mr. President, um, I came up here, uh, yesterday to look at the, uh, helping unit gutters and all. Everything looks very tidy. And I walked around and they changed all the necessary, uh, pipe boots that they were, say were due. And, um, uh, made the necessary changes on the facial board and painted them all. So, I would like to commend those guys for taking care of that for me. And not only that, Ms. Harris, for, you know, taking care of them, getting them calling, getting them up here to, to get started. So, um, the helping unit gutters has been, been a total rebound, right? And thank the jury for voting on, for accepting to let the guys do the job. I appreciate each and every one of y'all. Thank you so much.
You done a good job.
Okay, thanks a lot. And other than that, uh, Mr. President, that's all I have at this time.
Okay. I'm gonna stay in my office.
So, I don't have much. Just I did forget to, um, notify you all that the bank statements were reconciled and reviewed by Vice President, um, O'Quinn for the month of June already. And just to mark your calendars for the Region Six meeting. The meeting is scheduled for October fifteenth and is hosted by Livingston Parish. Um, we will provide more information once we receive a formal invite.
We got the reserves. Here, let you know if you're going or not, okay? Anything else, Mr. O'Quinn?
That's it.
Okay. Homeland Security, Mr. Darrell Bure.
Yeah, two things. We, we're sending, uh, RFG, I mean RFQ in tomorrow. They should be able to put it all into advertisement. That's gonna be for the generator project here for the parish. So, that's coming along. We'll be able to have generators on the DPW, health unit, sheriff's office, the courthouse, clerk or court. And we're hoping we'll have a little money left out of it when we finish with all this project. Where we can add, uh, library on there, cause that would give us a heating and cooling place for the parish. So, if we had a heat wave or cold, we can use them. We talked to Trevor about it, uh, about a year ago, when we worked on some stuff on it. So, uh, she shook twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. It's not open yet, and it is due next week. The state is not opening. We're hoping they'll open it tomorrow. If not, we just gonna reapply what we did last year and file an amendment, put it on what we wanted us. But they gave us seven days to turn it all in. So, we've been, we've been putting in some overtime trying to get this thing ready, so we don't lose that money.
Oh, losing that one penny if we can help it.
No, it's about thirty-one thousand dollars what we looking at on that grant. And we will make it. But, uh, that's all I got.
Any question, Mr. Bure?
Uh, Mr. Darrell, you don't have to worry about tropical song, tropical storm Dexter. He's moved on, so.
I am glad to hear that.
Dexter was a good boy. He went on about it.
But if you remember, they went out there, played around and turned around and go back. So, they still there. We keep an eye on it. But, uh, if they start slowing down, we really gonna watch it.
Thank you, Mr. Bure. Commissioning board planning is on it. We got a recommendation approved, A, two, E. Get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by wholesale jury. Roll call, go please.
Second.
Yes, second, yeah.
Couple of something. There's a bunch of them.
Mr. Dexter McCray?
No.
Oh. I did it last time. I did it last time.
Sorry.
It must be contagious.
Um, Mr. Dexter Armstead, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flynnakin?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn?
Yes.
Anything else? We're planning it on, I'm not, take your name, please.
John Ruschon, the Secretary for Planning and Zoning. I just want to let the police jury know, the first map was turned down by Planning and Zoning. Not the first map on that list, just the first map under the new ordinance was turned down because it didn't meet the requirements of the new ordinance. And two other maps were tabled this month because they had to do some corrections and some investigation to comply with the new ordinance. So, like I said, the process is working. But just so you know, you may hear about a map getting turned down. It's because they were for half acre lots on two and a half acres. And they were talking about six, six lots on two and a half acres. So, it got turned down.
Mr. Ruschon, before you go, you get many complaints about the new ordinance?
We getting mixed reviews. But it takes a while for everybody to understand it and to iron it out and to, as far as that goes, the commission to understand what all the new ramifications are. Because we did have one map come up that's, you're required to have a road and a right of way now for family divide. That road is required by the new ordinance to be built, and it's a road to nowhere. It goes into another right of way that doesn't have a road. It's literally gonna be requirement to have a road to nowhere. So, but that's the new ordinance, and the family's gonna operate under that way. But that's one of them we have to investigate on that, because their previous map, the right of way was two lines on a map, no road required.
At least we did get something in place, and we got something that we can start working with.
That's it. That's what we're working on in the commission.
You're gonna have to tweak it here and there as, as time goes on.
I'm glad everybody understands that, cause it is a work in progress.
But I'm saying, I don't know, work in progress.
And that's something else that Forte and Toblata helped was to write the ordinance, helped along with that.
Public comment, if any. If, I intend a motion going, is that session will no longer than fifteen minutes?
Second.